Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call please.
Kane.
Here.
Coier.
Here.
Finnegan.
Stout.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Galivan.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Okay, we'd like to begin this evening with recognition of a business partnership. Turn over to Dr. Barbanati at this time.
Thank you and good evening. I'd like to invite Deb D'Amato from Divine Wine and Cocktail Bar to come up to the table. You want to come up here, Deb? Let's say a few things about you and then you'll have a chance to address the board if you'd like. We are very happy to continue our business partner recognition. We can't do what we do here in District 88 without the help of our community and our business partners are one large aspect of the support that we receive. So Deb D'Amato is the owner of Divine Wine and Cocktail Bar in Villa Park and she's a prime example of an individual and company working with us to achieve our goals. She's always willing to support District 88 and goes above and beyond to ensure our events are successful. Two years ago, we were looking for a venue to host the District 88 Foundation's inaugural gathering at the Grapevine fundraiser and we struggled and searched for a while before finding Divine Wine and Cocktail Bar in Villa Park. The second we walked through the doors, we knew we had found the perfect location. Not only was the ambiance warm and inviting, but Deb continued to support all of our ideas. She was also integral to coordinating beverage vendors for the event. In September 2024 and 25, Deb allowed us to take over much of her beautiful restaurant to host the Foundation's event. She welcomed us with open arms from letting us stop by to film and put together a promotional video to arriving early to set up. And her eye and expertise to create a superb environment are second to none, from making sure the room layout is seamless to checking out every minute detail. She also didn't hesitate to place posters throughout her facility to help promote the fundraiser. Thanks in large part to Deb, the District 88 Foundation hosted two successful fundraisers. Those events have raised more than $26,500 to fund mini-grants to benefit District 88 students through implementing innovative teacher-led initiatives that could not otherwise be funded through the district's budget. But what's most impressive about Deb is her positive attitude and friendly demeanor. She can be busy preparing for multiple parties with employees and customers needing her attention and she never hesitates to chat and help and she does it with a smile. As you can see, she's a tremendous business partner and we're proud to honor her in recognition of her efforts. Deb, we thank you for all you've done to help us, for always being such a collaborative and positive partner with the district. And we just, again, we wanted to say thank you and we really appreciate you. Thank you so much.
I'm going to cry. Should I need to push?
Yeah.
First of all, I want to say thank you for the opportunity. I was blown away when I originally got the phone call from Dr. Jean Barbananti. I was like, whoa, this is really amazing. So thank you for the opportunity. And thank you, Jean Taylor. And yes, I wrote notes on my hands. And thank you, Danny Brink. I was overwhelmed with the opportunity to be able to help with this function and I would be happy to do it, to do anything I could to help with the children because the children are our future and I think everybody should, anytime they have the opportunity to play it forward and help with the children, which are the future of our community and our world. So thank you. And Merry Christmas, everybody.
I should also mention she's a proud alumni of District 88 as well, right?
Yes. Next, we have 88's Best. Each month, we recognize a student from each of the high schools who's been nominated as one of 88's Best. Forgot to mention to the students that after we call each of you, I will have you come forward here. I have some other things to present to you as part of 88 being 88's Best. So we'll begin this evening with Edison Trail.
Good evening. Edison Trail is honored to recognize Zion Martinez as this month's recipient of 88's Best. Zion, I really did not know where to begin when, you know, trying to look at everything you've done and all that you've been a part of here at Edison Trail. So I'm going to start with some teacher comments because I think they truly say it best. Mr. Lyons, Social Studies Department Chair and Teacher, shared, "Zion Martinez was an exceptional student in my AP US History class two years ago, consistently demonstrating strong academic performance and genuine intellectual curiosity. He approached complex historical questions with insight, asked thoughtful questions that elevated class discussion, and participated with a level of engagement that supported and inspired his peers. Zion's positive and friendly demeanor made him a pleasure to have in the classroom as he contributed meaningfully while also helping create a supportive learning environment." Ms. Bonk, Science Teacher, "Zion is a hardworking, passionate student who excels in the most challenging courses AT offers. It has been a joy to be his teacher over the past couple of years in engineering and AP physics. Zion is always willing to help his classmates as he deeply cares about learning." Ms. Trapani, Social Studies Teacher, "I am beyond proud of Zion. I had the pleasure of teaching Zion in AP Human Geography. Spoiler alert, he earned a five on the exam. Zion is the kind of student every teacher hopes to have: hardworking, self-motivated, and consistently committed to growth. He approaches challenges with determination, yet he never loses his sense of humor or his ability to bring joy to the classroom. Zion knows how to work hard, but he also knows how to make learning meaningful and fun for those around him." Ms. Clark, English Teacher and Volleyball Coach, shared, "Zion is one of the rare students who seems to get along with everyone, teachers and students alike. Zion worked really hard in my English class and always came into class with a positive attitude. He was highly motivated and always responsible. Zion is the first volunteer and he is willing to help out everyone. I know he is being recognized for his academics, but Zion is one of the most well-rounded students we have seen at AT." Mr. Deanie, Soccer Coach, added, "Zion is an amazing person. I was fortunate to coach him in soccer and his work ethic was second to none. He improved each week and was an incredible team player. During the season, on Wednesdays, we would do study groups and he would help individuals who were struggling with assignments. Zion has taken advantage of everything Edison Trail has to offer and his involvement in academics, athletics, and clubs has been a joy to watch." Mr. Nunez, Soccer Coach, shared, "Zion Martinez is one cool dude. Zion was always the one to step up and do whatever, what others were afraid to do: play goalie. Martinez was always and continues to be very respectful to be his teachers, respectful to his teachers, peers, and himself. Zion is a multi-talented individual who has the future in his hands." Ms. Irwin, PLTW Aerospace Science Engineering Teacher, shared, "Zion is the embodiment of Blazer's Best, a student who strives for excellence in everything he undertakes while uplifting others along the way. He is an incredible, incredibly involved member of our school and community who has left a undeniable mark on both. I am so fortunate to have him as a aerospace engineering, in aerospace engineering this year because he takes on every challenge with the best intentions and with a smile on his face. He is able to work through rough spots with determination and grace while making it all look easy. Case in point, he engineered and built a Balsa glider for class that won in the distance challenge by almost 40 feet. He has an engineer's mind and a tinkerer's soul, characteristics that will serve him well when he pursues a degree in engineering after high school. I can safely say things will not be the same around here next year without Zion's energy, ambition, and service." Mr. Villasenor, DECA Advisor and Business Teacher, shared, "I had the privilege of knowing Zion for the past two years as his DECA advisor. I've been, I have seen firsthand his dedication and leadership. He consistently puts in the effort and motivates others and represents our program with pride. Our DECA chapter would not be where it is today without his hard work and commitment. And he truly sets the standard for what it means to be an exceptional student leader." And finally, Ms. Bilotro, Italian Teacher, added, "I wanted to take some time to congratulate a student who has truly brightened my AP Italian classroom, Zion Martinez. I've been lucky enough to teach Zion for three years and in that time, he has become one of those rare students who remind you exactly why you love being a teacher. Zion brings something special into the room every single day: kindness, confidence, genuine enthusiasm, and an energy that lifts everyone around him. He is highly respected by his peers, not just for his work ethic, but for the way he leads, with warmth, humor, and a true desire to help others succeed. On top of that, his skills in Italian, both speaking and writing, are exceptional. He approaches every conversation and assignment with precision, creativity, and confidence that inspires everyone around him. He is, simply put, a gem, the kind of student who makes a teacher grateful to walk into the classroom. Zion, thank you for three wonderful years, for all the laughs, the thoughtful insights, and for the heart you brought to our classroom." Zion, when he graduates from Edison Trail, he will have completed 11 advanced placement and dual credit courses. He has opted for honors every opportunity that he has had. He is inducted into our National Honor Society. He's a member of Student Council. As you heard, DECA, he acts as a Blazer Ambassador for students transitioning into Edison Trail as well as Pay It Forward. He's a part of International Dance. He's a math team member. He's a part of Letterman's Club, Letters of Love, Youth and Government, and he is the co-president of the Edison Trail Veterans Support Organization. He is a member of our volleyball team, soccer team, as well as wrestling. Somehow, he finds the time to work outside of school at Raising Canes and has even volunteered in the past with our youth wrestling program. He has received honor roll every semester at Edison Trail. He's been recognized as student of the semester in social studies and qualified for math and DECA State as well. Looking ahead, Zion plans to pursue engineering with his dreams of studying aerospace or mechanical engineering and hopes to work at either NASA or Lockheed Martin. He has completed interviews with MIT and Yale and is also applying to schools such as Georgia Tech, Colorado State, truly just demonstrating the drive that he has. You know, one fun story about Zion, getting a chance to interview him for this opportunity. You know, he's done so many things and he's been a part of so much, but he gives so much credit to others. Like to sit with him and to just hear the, in his voice, really say, he's like, yeah, I'm the co-president of AT VSO, but it's not about me. My other, you know, members of my club and my teams, they do just as much as I do. It was just a truly kind of humbling moment to kind of be in that room and hear him, hear him speak about his own leadership. So Zion, congratulations on being this month's recipient of 88's Best.
Sign it this time. I'll turn the floor over to you.
Well, I'd just like to thank everyone here, the Board of Education, Principal Andrews, for giving me the opportunity and selecting me for December's District 88's Best. I'd also like to thank my parents and my brothers. I wouldn't be who I am today without a lot of their sacrifices and who they decided to make me when I was growing up, all the bullying. But ultimately, ultimately, it made me who I am today and I appreciate every single moment I have with them. I also like to give a special shout out to all of my friends from school. I grew up with them majority of my life and spent countless hours either studying or goofing off in class. And honestly, the competitiveness that we bought in either Calc III or any of my honors classes definitely motivated me to do better than most of them, but ultimately, we pushed each other to our limits and we made each other the best we could. And now we get to celebrate all these hard-working years together in our last year, hopefully spending some years together in college, but also accomplishing our dreams together. And just thankful for everything that I've gotten in life, all the opportunities, all the sacrifices that I've made. I know that every moment hasn't been perfect, but I know that I've done what's possible and I've done what's best for me and I've grown to be an amazing person thanks to everyone in my life.
So before the meeting, we had an opportunity to ask some questions and so I'm going to start off with asking the question. Which teachers were the biggest influence upon you?
Well, I'd definitely say it'd be two teachers, either Mr. Bugaiuski or Ms. Stackwallin. Those two teachers were definitely the most impactful of my high school career. They were the ones that ultimately introduced me to math team. At first, I thought it was a bunch of nerds geeking out around math, but when I came one day to the meeting and I convinced all my friends to come with me, it's honestly an amazing experience. And I've qualified for state these past three years, hopefully my last year as well. And it's safe to say that it's definitely made me into the person I am today. Ms. Stackwallin and Mr. Bugaiuski, I've had them two years each and they both brought the best out of me. In a lot of difficult topics, they guided me through every problem, every subject, and I pursue a lot higher of ideas now because of them. And I don't, am not comfortable with the basic. I push myself to exceed thanks to them. And I like, I give a lot of credit to who I am today because of them.
Thank you.
So I'm going to ask you the question I asked downstairs because it was such a great answer. What is the one thing that you're doing that you didn't think you would do before you got to Edison Trail?
Well, so going into high school year, sophomore year, I was approached by a senior named Zach Morris. I'm not sure if you guys are, know him. He told me one day, and me and some of our friends, to go out and put up American flags around the community. And I first thought this was kind of weird. And then ultimately, the day of, we were driving around in a minivan blasting the National Anthem, carrying the flags and putting them around our neighborhood. We did this for the club known as Addison Trail Veterans Support Organization, AT VSO. I currently serve as the co-president. This club ultimately, I believe, has helped me shape the person I am today. It's where we help honor the veterans that reside in Addison and we do a lot for them. We host luncheons, we do ceremonies, and also we do the flags for Addison. But that's not the only thing we do. I believe that as a co-president in our club, I love to unite everyone in our club. I like to say that our club doesn't exclude anyone from doing it. Everyone's always welcome and we're always looking for more members. And I just love that one day out of every couple of months, every week, we get to do what we do best, honor our veterans, and show that we aren't just a bunch of young people that have nothing to do with the older generation. We obviously love that, what they did for us and we want to honor what they've done for us in our freedoms.
Thank you. Congratulations on behalf of the board. We know you'll be back again as a state qualifier, you know, but thank you for all that you've done at Edison Trail and good luck to you.
Thank you.
And now Willbrook.
Thanks so much. Willbrook is proud to introduce Sarah Inescu as this month's recipient of District 88's Best. So I told Sarah when we let her know that she was going to be recognized this month that I feel like I get a chance to talk about someone that over four years has become as much of a colleague sometimes as, as a student and as a leader because of how much she participates in and outside of the building and throughout the district, frankly. So I'm going to start with the compliments from the staff, all right? Mr. Jan Boelbeck, Department Head for Music, starts, "Sarah represents the very best of District 88. She's an exceptional student, a dedicated leader, and a driving force within our music community. As president of TRIAM, she has shown remarkable initiative, collaboration, and vision, consistently working to elevate the experiences of music students and strengthen our department as a whole. In addition to her leadership, Sarah is a deeply committed musician, participating in multiple band classes, jazz band, and AP music theory, while also leading the highly successful saxophone quintet frequently featured at school concerts and community events. What makes Sarah stand out is not just her musical talent, but her forward-thinking creativity and reliability. She is often the one bringing ideas forward before the adults do, offering to design promotional materials, organize events, or support her peers without being promoted. Her professionalism, thoughtfulness, and ability to anticipate needs reflect maturity beyond her years and her work continues to make a meaningful impact on the program and our school. On behalf of the music department, we are very proud that you are being recognized as one of District 88's Best. Your social studies teacher, well, social studies teacher, Mr. Montgomery, and our department head, Mr. Epple, who helped coordinate YES and TBC, say this, "Sarah has been a valuable member of both YES and TBC." That's our Brooke News Channel, by the way. As a member of YES, she is always thinking of others and suggesting ways to connect with and support students who need it. She has been a TBC anchor for two years and is a leader in the group when it comes to brainstorming topics that need to be shared with the school audience and writing scripts to keep everyone informed and up to date." Mr. Fenske, your freshman science teacher, says, "As a freshman, Sarah was one of the very best honors biology students in her class. Even now, I remember the thoughtful completeness of her answers to lab and assessment questions. Since then, I've remained in contact with Sarah as a member of both Scholastic Bowl and Science Olympiad teams. Outside of Willbrook, I also know that Sarah volunteered to spend a week last summer working in a 175-year-old lighthouse? That's awesome. On an isolated island in Lake Michigan." Other science teacher, Ms. Phillips, says, "Sarah's strong work ethic combined with her endless curiosity have led to academic successes. She has developed a strong background in many different content and extracurricular areas which help her bring a well-rounded perspective to her studies. She is an exemplary warrior." Ms. Allen Spock, your English teacher for freshman year, said, "I had the pleasure of teaching Sarah in English nine honors and even then, it was clear that she was an exceptionally gifted student. She demonstrates a love of maturity and wisdom far beyond her years and her talent as a writer is remarkable. Despite taking on numerous projects and responsibilities, she manages her time with impressive discipline and sets realistic, healthy expectations for herself. What has always stood out most about Sarah, however, is her empathy and kindness. She is one of the most thoughtful and genuinely compassionate students I have taught. She cares deeply about others and carries herself with quiet humility. Willbrook has been a better place because of Sarah. We will miss her tremendously, but we are excited to see all that she will accomplish as she embarks on her next great adventures." Our CTE Department Head, Ms. Mary Barney, says, "Sarah is an amazing choice for District 88's Best. She's a hard worker, conscientious, and thoughtful as she assists classmates and completes her own work in CTE and other areas. Sarah is exceptional, fantastic, considerate, and kind as she completes projects in and out of class with peers and alone, as well as helping others to find their career path, most recently mentoring new students to Willbrook High School and guiding tours for our eighth grade step-up days. She has an extraordinarily bright future." Mr. Fliegel, English Teacher, says, "Sarah has been a crucial staff member, editor, and now editor-in-chief for Skyline, our school newspaper. Her leadership, creative ideas, and hard work are a model for her peers and have helped Skyline grow. I've been so fortunate to have known Sarah since her freshman year and I will sorely miss her when she graduates. A Skyline staff member just now was reading one of Sarah's articles from that, from a previous year for Guidance on a Curtain article. I'll also miss her playing saxophone in many musical contexts at Willbrook. Another area she has developed her skill is become a skilled leader." And finally, World Language Teacher and Multicultural Club Sponsor, Neely Webbery, says, "Sarah is an exceptional leader. She naturally supports others, contributes positively to our school community, and actively recruits students to participate in clubs and activities. She is enthusiastic, consistently friendly, always willing to help, and truly one of our best students. Her dedication goes above and beyond. She was a key contributor to our multicultural night and thanks to her hard work and commitment, the event became a wonderful and meaningful celebration of cultures." So if you heard, Sarah's impact at Willbrook is vast and across the entire building. When she completes her high school career, she will have successfully completed 10 advanced placement courses as well as a multitude of honors, college credit earning, and dual credit classes. She's been recognized as an AP Scholar with Distinction, earned distinct honor roll status, as well as the Illinois Seal of Biliteracy for not just Spanish, but also Romanian. She has also been inducted to the National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, National Science Honor Society, our World Language Honor Society, TRIAM Music Honor Society, Quill and Scroll, which is the International High School Journalism Honor Society, and Civitas, which is social studies. She's also received the Freshman in Human Relations Award and last year was selected as the Chicago Sun-Times Next Voices winner last year for her article on the importance of preserving historical monuments. But it doesn't stop there. So in and out of the classroom, she leads multiple academic and co-curricular areas. As you heard, she's editor-in-chief of our school newspaper. She's also section leader and a teacher assistant for our band. You say you're down there four periods a day, right? Yeah, you're pretty well teaching the classes. All right. She's also performed regularly in the Wind Ensemble Concert Band, Percussion Methods Jazz Band, Marching Band, Pep Band, and our newly formed Blues Band. She's also a member of the Pitt Orchestra for our theater department and she recently, she recently formed, as you heard, her own band with fellow saxophone players. Her talents have been recognized by HSA. She's earned Best in Room in Division One ratings in the solo ensemble competitions. Again, it doesn't stop there. As a president of our multicultural club, she's the co-founder of our cultural night, helping to celebrate and recognize the multiple ethnic and cultural at Willbrook. You can also hear and see Sarah regularly as she delivers our daily announcements every single day with two of her classmates. She's also one of the anchors for our Brooke News Channel. She's also a member of the principal student leadership team, the superintendent student advisory team, our media team, Key Club, and participates in women and STEM. As well as, she's a student ambassador who helps students transfer to Willbrook High School. She's a youth equity steward promoting and celebrating the multiple student backgrounds at our school. She also competes for our Scholastic Bowl, Science Olympiad, and Youth and Government teams. Beyond Willbrook, she's a member of Scouting America. She has mentored eighth grade students through our PENPAL program, served as an election judge. Where do you find the time to do all this? As well as a docent at that lighthouse that we mentioned and volunteers at Feed by Starving Children. After Willbrook, her number one choice is Northwestern University. She's applied for early admission. She's awaiting that. She's awaiting that in just a week. Yep, and plans to study neuroscience in a pre-med track and minor in either music or journalism. She intends to continue her education in medical school and pursue a career in psychiatry or neurology. There isn't anything that you can't do, Sarah, because you've already done so much and built an amazing foundation. We're looking forward to hearing all the accomplishments for what you'll do after Willbrook High School, but we're so proud that we get another semester with you to enjoy it together. So again, on behalf of all of Willbrook High School, congratulations on being recognized as this month's recipient of 88's Best.
Sarah, at this end, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Yeah, first off, I just want to say thank you one more time to everyone here and the entire Willbrook community for just all of the opportunities that have, that have been given to me. You know, my, my parents, you know, grew up under the communist regime in Romania. They were given the opportunity to come here for a better life for me and my siblings. And I'm just eternally grateful for that and all of the opportunities I get to have here at Willbrook. I would also like to thank my, my siblings, my sister and my brother for always giving me advice, for, you know, always being there for me, always helping me out when I need it. I'd like to thank my, my, my one-year-old nephew for just being so sweet and amazing and, and, you know, always cheering me up when he comes over. I would also like to thank the counseling departments at Willbrook. About, about a year ago, I guess it was in the spring, I was having a bit of a rough time, but Ms. Coe and Ms. Samora have just been such a huge help to me in getting me back on my feet, and I'm just so grateful to them.
So, Sarah, before the meeting, I got to ask you, we all got to ask you some questions. And so mine is just, you know, which teachers were the biggest influence upon you?
Yeah, a lot of teachers come to mind, but I would say first would be Mr. Fleagle. I've had him not just as an English teacher for AP English junior year, but also as an advisor for Skyline all four years. And he's just been the teacher that I can always go to when I need something. Not, it doesn't even have to be class-related or Skyline-related. And he's just, he's really challenged me in both my writing skills, my interviewing skills, my critical thinking skills, really pushing me to think outside the box. And yeah, he's just been a huge help. And another person that comes to mind would be Mr. Rendek. Once again, another teacher that I've had all four years. And he's just helped me tremendously, giving me the opportunity to, you know, play in a multitude of settings. And, you know, I, he was just my concert band teacher freshman year, and I have four periods with him, so we're pretty close. Yeah.
Thank you. Do you have the board members?
Congratulations, Sarah. Looking back four years, what would be your best piece of advice for an incoming freshman?
Yeah, so I agree with all of the traditional wisdoms of, you know, get involved in a lot of clubs, you know, find the thing you're passionate about, have fun. But I would say the number one thing that's helped me is to recognize that. And this is kind of just my philosophy. I think that things happen for a reason, some good, some bad. And I, and, yeah, and just so much change happens in high school. Once again, some good, some bad. And things might happen. You might not get the award that you wanted to get. You might not get the grade that you wanted to get. You might have a falling out with a friend. And I just think that at the end of the day, all of these events that happen in your life are developments for a better you, is what I would say, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, congratulations, Sarah. We know, you know, this year is not over, so there's still, you're going to be doing so much more. I'm sure we'll get the opportunity to have you back again. But at this point, I'm going to ask both 88's Best to come forward. I have some things to present to you, so I'm going to have you come all the way up here. Okay. First, we have a certificate that declares you as 88's Best. Congratulations. And also for you. And then we have a gift certificate anyway, so you can fit your parents. Because they know you got this now, so. And then we have this memo that's created specifically for 88's Best. And have the box to go along with that. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations to both of you. If you hang around, we have the state qualifiers to recognize. And then we're going to take a 10-minute break, and we have refreshments and gives the opportunity for the board and administration to be able to congratulate you as well. So good luck to you. Okay, next we have the state level recognitions. I'll turn over to the principals.
Thanks so much. Here with us this evening is our IHSA third-place in state girls' flag football team. Incredibly proud of their work throughout the season and certainly throughout the state tournament. So we're going to introduce head coach Rachel Carros and ask her to bring the team and coaches up with her.
I thought I'd be fine winging this, but now I'm regretting it after Sarah talking and all her accomplishments, so. Thank you, Sarah. All right. First of all, thanks a lot. You know, we've got to do this the last four years. And every year, I feel like we end the season and you wonder if you're ever going to get back. And, and it's gotten harder every single year. If you notice, we are missing quite a few girls. Flag football serves, another reason why it's so important, it serves as such a great crossover sport for our athletes and another opportunity for them to do something in the fall. So with that, all of our girls, even the ones that are here tonight, do other things. And flag football is just another great addition to what they're already doing and providing them more opportunities, you know. And in some cases, it's turned into their, like, favorite love, their favorite passion. So, so that's why we're missing everybody, but they're all very grateful that you guys are honoring them tonight. So thank you for that. Thank you guys again for allowing us to host the state championships one more year. Although that is an exciting thing, it also adds a little bit of pressure to us of hoping that we will be at it and not just watching. Also, you know, everybody thinks that it's something that gives us an advantage of getting there in the first place. But it hasn't been easy any year, and it certainly is getting harder. We are graduating our first group of four-year flag football players, some of which will be going on and playing at a higher level. But what's been interesting for them is they've had to play four different styles of flag football because the rules have changed every single year. It's become more physical and the way I like it. It's great, okay? It's just a great sport. And it's football, football is just getting more exciting. Definitely more fun to watch than play. I know these girls come out like you would thought they played tackle football after the state series this year. So with the excitement, a lot of the great things that the team has done, obviously gained their, third place in state isn't an easy thing to do. I know we left there feeling a little bit disappointed in ourselves. And that is certainly something that I, like, I went and did a workout right after. I was in my feelings a little bit. And I was, you know, really in some self-reflection and rational-brained Rachel will think, like, not everybody gets to do that. I, you know, I coached softball for 18 years and didn't even get a regional title. So to be able to be so decorated in one sport within four years is pretty amazing. If my athletes don't win a single trophy ever again in their life, they're probably still some of the most successful athletes that have passed through. And I can say that to myself and my coaching staff that there isn't much more for them to have to prove to what they've been to the community, but what they've done for Willbrook and how inspiring they've been to other teams in the state. We attended the All-State Dinner a couple weeks ago, and the head coach from Maine South, when he, he got the Coach of the Year award. And he mentioned our girls as a, as a inspiring group for them, of somebody that they looked up to when they were first starting the sport at Maine South. So if anything else, I am very proud of what my girls have done to inspire other girls across the state to get involved and also providing more opportunity for future female athletes to come in Phillip Park and Lombard and whoever else feeds into us, all the wonderful places. So a lot of things sometimes go unnoticed and don't get a lot of time. So I do want to recognize some of the awards that we got throughout the, the year. So as a team, we got our second-ever regional title, our second-ever sectional title, and then our fourth visit to state and our first IHSA trophy, which the third-place trophy. We also, it was the first year we had a Western Urban Conference, so we also had our first conference championship as a team. And we also had our first all, sorry, all-conference players. So our first all-conference players were Marley Smers, Liz Pedinger, Ley Bernardo, Janelle Adams, Mackenzie Edison, and Lily Mceas, and Jada Langston. And then we also have the Offensive Player of the Year was Marley Smers for the conference. And our Defensive Player of the Year was Janelle Adams in the conference. So we did really well this year in the conference. And that was all voted on by the Western Urban Gold Schools. We also had four, the second-most all-state picks in the state. Marley Smers, Mackenzie Edison, Jada Langston, and Ley Bernardo all got all-state. As well as, Marley Smers just got the Player of the Year for the, by, by Western Urban Life. And Ley Bernardo just competed this past weekend in the USA Football National ID Camp, and she got the MVP award, so I'm very proud of that. That's, if you know anything about that, this year I got to coach in the USA Flag Football Select Bowl. And if, if that provides Ley with the opportunity, that's kind of a direct pipeline to possible national team type of stuff. So that's a big deal. But more importantly, again, what the sport's done to them, for them, is provide opportunity. Some of them might not have had a path necessarily to college or something that they wanted to focus on in college. And yes, you go for academics, but football's fun. And if you're going to have the opportunity, you get that as well. So very proud you're going to see, our girls are highly recruited. Been getting tons of emails saying, "We're looking for girls from Illinois, but specifically Willbrook High School." And that is all because of the work they do on the field. So that was longer than I expected. I also want to thank, obviously, Nick Hildreth, who through all this has become just like, like coaching with a brother. If you hear us on the sidelines, you'll be like, "You guys are related, you guys fighting all the time?" Whatever. But really, we're just really passionate about doing the same, you know, just providing the same type of opportunity that he does with his tackle players as we, and hopefully being able to do that with our, our girls. Coach Miller, Terrence Miller, our offensive coordinator, does it. You know, we go and see a lot of other coaches who think they have to do a lot of different stuff, and he, he comes up with a great game plan for, and is a huge part of our success and why we've, why we've made it as far as we have. And also, I got to bring on two of my best friends and teammates from the Chicago Winds this year. So not many staffs have pro football players on their team. And so Coach Matheson and Coach Nikki Griffith. So they have volunteered their time this year to help provide a better opportunity for my girls. So thank you all. That's all I got. Anything else? Okay.
Do it now. So before you leave, the next item on the agenda is Girls' Flag Football Coach of the Year. So in the fall, the IHSA office contacted us to let us know that Rachel Carros was named the Girls' Flag Football Coach of the Year for the state of Illinois, and that she was going to be submitted her name and her, and her work at the national level for the national coach of the year. So we're still awaiting that, that award, which we are certain is, is going to be coming. But just a little background, because during eighth-grade step-up days, we actually had many of the flag football players be a part of that as, as examples with our incoming eighth graders of something that never existed before, that many times throughout your high school journey, things that you create or become a part of have become something that's sustained and now is a legacy for everyone that follows. As Rachel mentioned, they're graduating their first four-year athletes. And we remember vividly the spring of 2022. She and Nick came back from the Chicago Bears facility, had been to a flag football coaching clinic, which they got to participate, so they loved that, and walked in the office and said, "We need to start flag football." And from there, the, the story tells itself. The very first summer camp had students coming from all different sports and some students who had never participated in a sport or an activity yet. And because of their passion, and her passion specifically, led that very first team to the first-ever Chicago Bears state title. Still some of the most memorable plays that we've seen. Some of them have been, that were highlighted nationally, you know, by a catch on a football field in Oak Park River Forest, as well as an interception inside of, at, at Hal's Hall, to where now being recognized as the very first Chicago Bears Flag Football Coach of the Week in 2024. Rachel, as she mentioned rather quickly, she is the quarterback for the Chicago Winds, which is the professional tackle football team in the Women's National Football Conference. I have her jersey. That's how, that's, you know, that's, that's how much passion, and her teammates, and watching them play together, but also watching them coach together has been tremendous. And I know she just mentioned about, obviously, working with USA Flag Football at the national level and on occasion has traveled to Spain to represent girls' flag football and the sport with the Chicago Bears to help spread that. You can't mention flag football without Rachel Carros' name being mentioned. Boy, I didn't think I was going to get choked up thinking about it. But it's because the passion she brings, not just to this sport, but to everything she does. There's no other coach deserving of the honor without a doubt. And what she has brought and, and what you heard is exactly who she is every single day. It's about creating opportunities for, for young people that would not have had the opportunity before. So thank you for that. Thank you for being the person that made sure that we said yes, but you know we love saying yes. But, but most importantly, for continuing that passion in all of the future warriors. The, the kids coming in now, the, one of the first things they ask about is, "How do I join flag football?" It's what, that's what it's meant in our community. That's what it's meant to the young people coming through. You see it being played in the evenings on, in the youth level. And these athletes, these teams are, are the rock stars that everyone aspires to be. They, they're the trend, not just trendsetters, but they're the role models, not just for our own community, but for the teams across the state. There were 216 teams that were in the state playoff this year. That's because of the expansion of the, of the sport with your work and your leadership throughout. There'll be even more next year. And I know that you felt like maybe there was unfinished business, but the reality is you dominated this season. You really did, and you left everything on that field and created incredible memories, not just for yourselves, but for everybody who got a chance to be on that journey with you. And that's because of your leadership. So thank you, Rachel, and congratulations on being recognized as the IHSA Flag Football Coach of the Year.
Thank you. On behalf of the board, we can't say much more. We appreciate everything you've done and just how you've really ignited the export, but also I think the whole school and the district.
Thank you very much. That's because of the opportunity you guys gave us. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, at this time, we'd like to take a 10-minute break. I know Danny wants to take pictures. We have refreshments. And as we've always told all students and staff members, you do not have to stay for the rest of the meeting. So we will take a short break down.
Okay. Let's go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Roll call, please.
Kane.
Here.
Hoyer.
Here.
Finnegan.
Stowe.
Aaron.
Taylor.
Here.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Here.
Okay. At this time, the practice of the Board of Education provide a place on the agenda for and welcome comments and suggestions for the public. Do we have any e-cards or cards this evening?
Good evening. At this time, we do not have any public comments.
Okay. Then we'll move along to the public hearing on the 2025 tax levy. Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion to open the hearing.
I'd like to open the hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Stowe.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Hoyer.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. At this time, I declare that the meeting is open for the public hearing on the proposed property tax levy for the year 2025 and compliance with the truth in taxation law. Public notice of this hearing, public hearing was published in the Daily Herald the 28th day of November 2025, and all information was posted to the district website. At this time, I turn over to Dr. Barbanente and Mr. Demrocky to update the board on any changes that may have taken place since the proposed tax levy was reviewed at the November 10th, 2025 board meeting.
Charlie, is it okay if I take over?
All right. So today is the last meeting. We will discuss the property tax levy for 2025. As you may recall, we discussed the preliminary tax levy back on the October 27th board meeting. We brought the estimate and presented it at the last month's meeting. And with that, while not required to do so by prior practice and just full transparency, we published a public notice of the hearing and adoption for the truth in taxation. That's where you, if you're levying more than 5%, we're not, but we still held one anyways. It went in the Daily Herald on November 28th. Tonight, we're conducting the public hearing prior to the adoption. And then the last step after we adopt is it needs to be filed with the county clerk before the last Tuesday in December. We will start getting some estimates in March, and then letters will get mailed out in May. Reminder of the levy overview, we are subject to the PTEL or the Property Tax Cap, which limits the actual tax increase over the prior year's extension to the lesser of 5% or CPI. Reminder, the CPI for last December was 2.9%. So therefore, our maximum request is capped at 2.9% plus any new property. We don't, even at this time, don't know what the new property is going to be, as they are still working on the rolls. We have an estimate of somewhere between $10 and $15 million. So we went with the higher end at $15 million, which we believe is going to give us an extra 0.38% on top of that 2.9 or roughly, you know, 3.28. So we are levying at 4, just in case more property makes it onto the rolls from the assessor's office. Our request excludes the debt service, which is automatically extended by the county clerk. Last year's extension was a little over $69 million. We're requesting a 4% increase on that, so a little over $71.8 million. Again, you know, actual EAV and new property are unknown at this time of the levy, which is why we are requesting higher than CPI due to this unknown factor. And then, as always, it kind of becomes a hold harmless, so that tax extension of the current year becomes the base for future years. So you always extend off of what you've received. This hard-to-sea screen is kind of what we reviewed here in the past. So column A and column B are last year's tax rate and extension, so what we received. So for our cap funds, we got a little over $69 million. Again, debt service is extended by the county clerk. We don't levy for it. We have a general idea of what it's going to be. And then we don't levy for the aggregate refunds. Those are refunds from prior years. We don't estimate it. They just come in. So we've gotten somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000 for the past couple of years. So hopeful we'll get a little bit more again when the bills come out in May. So 4% is what we're asking for, which translates to $71.8 million levy. However, we do believe, based on kind of that new property of $15 million, that it will be, you know, roughly 3.28%, not the 4, and we should land somewhere close to $71.3 million. So about $500,000 less than we're asking for. As it relates to our tax rate compared to our local school districts, we have moved down from a 2.0846 tax rate last year to just under $2, so 1.9977, a decrease of about 4.2%. If you look at a tax bill based on a $300,000 home, equalized assessed value would be about a third of that, so about a third of that, so about just under $100,000, that tax bill would be about $2,000, $1,997.50. We are kind of right here in the middle, kind of with Lake Park and Fenton. We're all about, you know, a nickel apart. Hinsdale, due to their EAV, just has an extremely low tax rate. And then Glenbar, due to their size, has one of the highest. Fund balance information. So with levy year 2022, we were required to review the fund balance from what was shared at the September board meeting when we adopted the budget. So up here in the operating funds is kind of our beginning fund balance, based on what we adopted in terms of revenues and expense, where we project our ending fund balances to be. Again, a reminder with this one, this does include the $4 million working cash that we had sold earlier this fall. And those funds are dedicated towards construction projects as well as purchasing of school buses. Otherwise, there were no other changes with the levy as we presented kind of throughout the fall.
Okay. At this time, do any board members have any questions or comments? Seeing none, open up if there's any comments from the audience.
Good evening. We did not receive any public comments.
Okay. Thank you. Then at this time, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Stout.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Quayre.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. The meeting, the public hearing is closed, and the tax levy is set for the board action later in the meeting. At this time, we'll move along then to item eight, which is the motion to establish the consent agenda. Board members may request to move a consent agenda item to the discussion or action portion of the agenda. And the items in the consent agenda are either routine items or items that have been discussed previously.
I move to establish a consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Quayre.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Quayre.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we'll move on to separate action items. First one is the adoption of the property tax levy for 2025.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing and directing tax levy, including authorizing the certificate of tax levy for the year 2025, be filed with the D Page County Clerk accordingly.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Olson.
Yes.
Quayre.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, I'd entertain a, sorry.
There's one more.
One more motion.
Yeah. There's one more. I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing and directing certain special purpose tax levies.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Quayre.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Finnegan. I mean Kane, sorry.
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we'll move on to the treasurer's report for October 2025.
Presenting to the board for month ending October 31st, 2025, a total balance of $102,994,674.52. We have officially dropped under the 4.5% range on our investment accounts, with Byline Bank currently sitting at 4.46, so relatively still close. This month's interest income was $300,877.29, bringing our year-to-date interest income to $1,103,464.42.
I move that the Board of Education approve the treasurer's report as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Quayre.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have the budget status report for October 2025.
Great. For the education fund, local revenues through October, the district has received 47.23% or approximately $25 million worth of budget revenues. This is up slightly by about .6% over the prior year. Other local revenues is down about 10% from this time last year. For our corporate personal property replacement taxes, our CPPRT collections, we received about 32% or a little over $750,000. Investment income is strong in the education fund and currently at approximately $725,000 collected thus far, or roughly 52% of budget. A la carte food sales of approximately $198,000 or 23.5% of the budget. So working there, kind of carrying that similar trend from the previous year. And then finally, registration fees, parking fees, athletic entry fees budgets are about 40% collected thus far. For state aid, collections are currently slightly up 1.92% from the prior year with 2.03% or $1 million received, or roughly 26.6%. For federal aid, collections are down about 17.8% from the prior year with $1.83 million received, or about 53.3%. A lot of this comes from the lack of ESS receipts that we had at this point in time last year. For the education fund expenditures, they are trending up slightly, .58% versus last year. Salaries are down year-over-year by about .3%. Benefits are slightly up, .24%. Contractual services are up 2.97%, while supplies are down year-over-year about 10.4%. Capital outlay is up 19.8%. A lot of that has to deal with the timing. We have a lot of technology tucked in there, as well as some wrestling mats that old schools have purchased, as well as a planer and joiner that the C.TIG Perkins grant helped fund. Tuition expenses also up 3.3%. In the operations and maintenance fund, revenues are at 47.11% or approximately $3.63 million, up roughly .92% year-over-year. Investment income is at 38% of their budget. The only state revenue expected in this fund is that $50,000 school maintenance grant, which we don't typically see until the second semester. No federal revenue is expected in the O&M account. As it relates to the expenses, overall year-over-year activity is at about 33.5% expended, down approximately 9.1% versus the prior year. Salaries are slightly up .29%, while benefits are flat. Utilities and purchase service expense is down 19% year-over-year, and supplies are down 2.1% at this time. The purchase service decline is mostly due to the increased repairs that we saw in last year's budget during this time, where we had a lot of unexpected repairs, which kind of shot up kind of our expenses at that point in time. Capital expenditures are down 42.6% year-over-year. Most of this is due to the timing of the projects and when we paid them. For the transportation fund, revenues of approximately $2.97 million or 38.7% of budget, up 4, up 4.94% compared to this time last year. Within other local revenues, investment income of just over $43,000 is currently at about 17% of the budget. For state aid, we did receive our first categorical payment, approximately about $501,000, up slightly, .53% compared to last year. Also, there is no federal revenue budgeted for the transportation fund. For the expenses, expenses of just under $700,000 are trending slightly up 1.33% over the prior year, but following a similar timing trend as to last year's budget. And there is no capital outlay expenses remaining in this fund as we completed the purchase of the activity bus. And finally, in the IMR pension fund, revenue of approximately $1.14 million or 49.4% of budget is down about .64% year-over-year, while expenses of $625,000 or roughly 27% of budget is slightly up .84% over the prior year. Overall, really nothing, no outliers in this budget as, you know, to date, we call out. We did see a little bit of a jump in our phone bill, about 11% heading into October, so we're working with them to see, you know, what's causing that. But otherwise, all going according to plan.
I move that the Board of Education approve the budget status report as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Stout.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Quayre.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have the final pay application for the hot water system replacement.
The administration is presenting the final pay application for C.W. Burns Company, Inc., for the hot water system replacement work at Addison Trail in the total amount of $26,253.35. The pay application and appropriate final lien waivers were reviewed and approved by Arcon Associates. The contractor has finished all the punch list items, and everything is in working order. We did not use $11,846.65 of the contingency allowance for this project, so it was credited as a change order on the final pay application. And the final adjusted price for this project is $313,153.35.
I move that the Board of Education approve the final pay application from C.W. Burns Company in the amount of $26,253.35.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Stout.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Quayre.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have the wrestling mat disposal.
A wrestling mat at Willowbrook High School has been determined to be obsolete and no longer of use to the district. In accordance with established practice, it is recommended that the administration be authorized to dispose of it in the best interest of the school district. Items will be offered to intra-district transfer. Secondly, they will be offered to taxing bodies and employees via sealed bid process. If any capital equipment items are deemed to have a value exceeding $500, they will be advertised for sale to the public. Absolite or broken technology items are disposed of through a source that provides certification of environmentally legal disposal.
I move that the Board of Education authorize the administration to dispose of wrestling mats in the best interest of the district.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Quayre.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have, I'd entertain, purchase of band uniforms.
We are recommending that the Board of Education reject the bids received for the purchases of band uniforms for Willowbrook High School. Responses were received from two vendors in our solicitation to bidders. After reviewing sample uniforms, it was noted that the school was looking for a different style than originally specified in our proposal documents. The bids also came in higher than anticipated for the list of items requested. We will work with the school's band director to get an updated proposal of the items that are needed. We intend to adjust the specification and rebrand the items so that we will be able to obtain a better, a more competitive bid.
I move that the Board of Education reject all bids for the band uniforms as they are not in the best interest of the district.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Quayre.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we move on to discussion items. First one is the post issuance tax report.
In accordance with Board Policy 4.2, security disclosure, as a disclosure officer for the district, I am required to annually complete and report to the Board of Ed regarding the post-debt issuance tax compliance. To assist with this responsibility, Chapman and Cutler, LLP, provided the attached reporting templates that I have completed for all outstanding bonds from 2015 through 2025. As of December 2025, I find that we are in compliance with applicable reporting and tax law requirements. We continue to work with PMA Securities or PTMA Securities to submit the required reporting to the Electronic Municipal Market Access or Emma portal annually.
Okay. And then next, we have the Curriculum Council Committee needing recap.
Good evening. Let me grab by the slides really quick. All right. So just a few things I'd like to highlight from the curriculum council, the first being the new courses for next year, as well as some course changes that we're implementing between, for both Addison Trail and Willowbrook, we will be implementing an AP cybersecurity course for our students, as well as a youth apprenticeship and internship course. So we're adding on an internship component to the youth apprenticeship course, where we will be matching students up to their, with, from their, based on their career interests to different work-based opportunities that we have with them. So within this course, students will be submitting applications to ensure that we can properly match them to their career interests. And then the youth apprenticeship will continue to be focused in the IT and manufacturing areas. At Willowbrook, we have a foundations of civics class in our LINK program. That's a program within our learning services department. Addison Trail would like to launch the Blazer Cafe, and then we Arabic three honors at Willowbrook. Regarding dual credit expansion, we have two courses that are pending approval. So it's history 1140 for our second semester of AP US History. We currently do have dual credit for the first semester. It's 1130. So we're pending approval to offer that second semester to our students. And then we're also pending approval for Italian III at Willowbrook. And then finally, in our college and career tech department, we did, that was already approved, that the students would have the OFTI 1200, which is more dual, the same amount of dual credit, but it is recognized by the IAI, which is the Illinois Articulation Initiative. And then regarding course name changes, Ceramics I and II at Addison Trail have requested to be called Ceramics and Sculpture I and II. And then at Willowbrook, Photo, the Photography Sequence, would like to switch to Fundamentals of Photography. That's the old Photo I. And then Foundations of Film Photography, and then Foundations of Digital Photography. And that's the changes for next year. So thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move along then. Information, no discussion, and the freedom of information requests, as well as the credit card summary. And then we'll move on to school recognition, and we'll start with Willowbrook today.
Thanks so much. We are here at the final full week of the semester of classes, and transitioning very quickly into next week with final exams to complete an outstanding semester. During the past week, we spent some time with our incoming freshman class, the class of 2030. Even when we announced that, and our current students heard that number, a couple of them looked and said, oh, my goodness. But it was exciting to meet the students from Jackson, Albright, Jefferson, our private schools on December 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. They had tours of the building. They got a chance to learn about many of the courses that they'll be selecting here in a few weeks, and then had an opportunity to hear from our current Willowbrook Warriors about just our school culture and the transition to high school. It's also holiday concerts time. So last week, we kicked off with the jazz band and the show choir. Tomorrow night will be the bands, always a great show on, on stage. And then Thursday is the choir and orchestra together. On Friday, during the school day, we get an opportunity to host our Holiday Assembly, where all of our current students get a chance to see all of the music department students performing simultaneously in the same concert. So that'll be during Warrior time on Friday is our Holiday Assembly. We want to congratulate three of our students that were, made it to the IOMA All-State Choir and Band. Malaki Henigan, who's now a two-time qualifier. Christina Lagutki for the trumpet, and Isabel Weaver for choir as well. They will be performing in Peoria in January, always an outstanding concert that's being performed there, but they also attend a variety of different workshops. Our winter sports and activities are well underway. Our speech team continues their success. They took eighth place out of 21 schools at Romeoville, and then fifth place out of 30 schools this past weekend at DeKalb. They host their own tournament this weekend at Willowbrook. This past Friday was Winter Sports Community Night. We got a chance to introduce our 11 winter sports teams. We had our youth programs there. Mr. Sullivan kicked off the new half-court contest that will be at most, most of our basketball, both boys and girls' basketball games. Dominix Pizza has donated an extra-large, three-topping pizza for anyone who can make a half-court shot. I was the initial shooter. That didn't go well. Marley Smurz, All-State quarterback, she, she performed really well. And then one of our basketball players, Don Spock, actually put one in. And so that was exciting. So the crowd went crazy. But you can see that at our basketball games this, this season, a chance to win a Dominix Pizza. So always, always a great time. You heard from Rachel Caros and the flag football team, and she had mentioned about Marley being selected as a suburban life girl's flag football player of the year. You know, in, in total, she had, she threw for 3,681 yards. She had 72 touchdowns passing. She also rushed, she threw six touchdown passes in the sectional final alone. She also rushed for 536 yards and six of her own touchdowns. So she is, you know, an outstanding player, but also So she is, you know, an outstanding player, but also a great compliment to the entire team and how well they, they played together. As I mentioned, winter sports are in full competition now. If you want an opportunity to see some of our art students' works, the Funky Java Coffee House will be sponsoring our art show this Wednesday. There's a reception there from 4:30 to 7:00. And then, as I mentioned already, we're going to be transitioning into final exams next week.
Now, Edison.
Good evening. Thank you. Still, you know, busy winter. I know at both schools, our JROTC Leadership Academic Bowl, or what we call JLAB, or what is called JLAB, our JROTC students participated in. We had four students participate in this. Kelsey Diaz, who's a junior, Samantha Minago, who's a freshman, April Benitez, and then Dulce Zianic. They qualified for the second round in February. So in February coming up, they will do some more kind of leadership and team competitions as well as participate in kind of like a virtual academic bowl. Within our brigade, there's 143 other teams. So if we place in the top quarter in February with JROTC, they'll actually be invited to Washington, DC for a trip that's paid for by the Army. So pretty powerful experience for our students there. Coming up tomorrow, we have our freshman and sophomore college and career planning night via Zoom at 6:00 PM. That's held by our guidance department. And then on Wednesday, our junior or class of 27, College and Career Planning Night will also be at 6:00 PM via Zoom. Big event at Addison Trail coming up this weekend with La Posada. It's kind of our family and community holiday event. We used to do kind of a separate event for staff that the student council ran called Breakfast with Santa. We have actually combined those events. So students, staff, community members, different performing groups, all of that. So come out to Addison Trail at 4:00 PM this Saturday. As Dr. Kraus mentioned, last full week's master exams next week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. You know, the holidays and from Thanksgiving to winter break and everything brings a lot of really cool energy around schools. Just a couple of things to highlight that our groups have been a part of include Best Buddies is doing Santa Paws, which is pet items that they're collecting. Our Letters of Love is doing reindeer food, Toys for Tots in partnership with the Addison Township. Every student that attends La Posada, or every child that attends La Posada will be getting a gift. Our Boy Scouts does a food drive. We're helping out the township tomorrow. Our Holiday Benefit Concert, wrapping up our holiday concert series, will be on Wednesday at 7:00 PM. All the proceeds are then donated. So just a really cool time to be a part of Addison Trail and all the different organizations that you hear, like students like Zion are a part of. Addison Trail Step-Up Day will be on January 13th. Again, kind of the concept that we stole from Willowbrook High School. Our Course Information Night, January 15th. In the athletic world, lots of success lately, both in the winter season as well as fall season, a couple to highlight. Manny Roque got the Hoffman Estates Thanksgiving All Tournament team, so he made that team. Our Boys Basketball had a big conference win against Proviso East this past weekend. Our Addison Trail Athletes of the Month for the month of November were Alina Rodriguez in Flag Football as well as Noah Cruz for Tackle Football. Nico Dill, who was the tackle football quarterback, was named the West Urban Conference Gold Player of the Year as well as honorable mention for the 7A All-State Team. We have a couple other student athletes. Ives Romius, WSC Defensive Player of the Year. Noah Cruz, WSC Special Teams Player of the Year. And Dan Gonzalez, WSC Defensive Line Player of the Year. Couple updates from Addison Trail.
Now, Board Member Reports. Okay. And then Superintendent Report.
Just two quick updates. The first is as we are seeing an early arrival of difficult weather in our area, just a reminder that our weather-related school closing information is on our website. There are guidelines that are not, you know, black and white in terms of, you know, when, when we will close, but it gives some guidelines and indications of the things that we'll, that we'll be considering with school closings. It also has, again, just a reminder that that is the place really to look if we're going to have, if we're going to close, that's going to be the first, the first indication will be there on the website as well as our typical messaging to parents and students and staff. I also wanted to mention that on the December 16th is our parent update meeting. We started these a few years back to have a centralized meeting for parents that's run by the district staff just to give updates on topics. This, this one will be heavily focused on planning for next year and our college and career pathway programs that we have in District 88. And so I would highly encourage parents to attend. You should have received an email today with details, including the registration link. Any questions related to this meeting, you can contact Danny Brink, who's the Director of Community Relations for District 88, at dbrink@dupage88.net. So thank you.
Okay. And then item 16, public comments. Do we have any comments from the public?
Good evening. We did not receive any more public comments.
Thank you. Move on to announcements. The next Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, January 12, 2026 at 7:00 PM in the District Boardroom located at District Ministry of Offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Addison, Illinois 60101. And the following Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, February 2, 2026 at 7:30 PM in the District Boardroom located at District Ministerative Offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Addison, Illinois 60101. At this time, I entertain a motion to move into closed session for purposes of A, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity, however meeting to consider the increase, an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this act. And B, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. And C, discussion of minutes and meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Gallivan?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved, and we'll move into closed session.
I'm sorry, we're coming into open session. I forgot to have my mic on. Roll call please.
Cade.
Here.
Stout, here. Finnegan, Foyer.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Galvin.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Okay, after our closed session, there's action that's necessitated by the closed session. First item is item 21A, adoption of resolution for closed session meeting minutes and entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution to cause the minutes of the closed sessions from January 13th, 2025 through October 27th, 2025 to remain classified, and all other closed session minutes not listed on exhibit A and B shall continue to remain classified.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Foyer?
Yes.
Cade?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have 21B resignation agreement for employee 12082025.
I move to approve the resignation agreement for employee number 12082025 as presented.
Second.
Okay, any questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Foyer?
Yes.
Cade?
Yes. Motion's approved. And next, we have item 21C, approval Assistant Superintendent for Staff Services contract.
I move that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Mr. Michael Warren as Assistant Superintendent of Staff Services as presented.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Foyer?
Yes.
Cade?
Yes. Motion's approved. This time, I entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Meeting's adjourned.